Would you take a seat, please? I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you for coming. Welcome. This is our February 27th council meeting. I'm showing that it's 7:32 PM. Things are a little bit different tonight because Josephine is not here, so we'll try and get through it as best as we can because we all know how important she is to making things happen. All right. I will now call the rolls, starting with Rita Darrell.
Here.
Dave Engel.
Here.
Sylvia Hanekin.
Here.
Nick Molnar.
Here.
Jan Tully.
Here. Everybody was here.
Yeah, okay. Jan is here even though she has a voice problem, so bear with us. I would like to ask everyone to stand so our council president, Dave Engel, can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which Rita will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to thank you for another day, another chance to do your will. We thank you for the opportunity to come together and unite in purpose. We ask that you guide us this evening for your wisdom to know what is best for us. May we honor you. Amen.
First on the agenda, I don't see if we have minutes listed, but does anybody have minutes? I didn't see them in there. They weren't in there. Okay. Yes, we do have a financial report. We need acknowledging receipt of it. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the financial report.
Second.
We have a motion by Sylvia, and we have a second by Rita. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? And so we have passed. All right. The next section of the meeting is public comments. These comments can be a good time for us to learn your thoughts. We ask you to come to the microphone, which is located right over here, and state your name and address, and try and keep it to five minutes. And in order to speak, you need to fill in the sheet, and this evening Bill Romer has his name on it. And Bill Romer is our councilman-at-large for Summit County. Welcome, Bill.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. As you might know, I'm Bill Romer with Summit County Council. I represent the county at large. When I was here probably six years ago now, I made the commitment that if I were fortunate enough to be elected, I'd make sure that I went around the communities, there's 31 in Summit County, to make sure that I knew the issues that were facing both the elected officials and the constituents. I believe in meeting my commitments, and I'm here again tonight just to really listen and learn. I'm not here to pontificate. If anybody has anything they would like to discuss with me, I would be available after the meeting. And thank you so much for your time. And I think I still have about four and a half minutes, but I'm not going to use it.
No, why? You made a big hit. Thank you, Bill. All right. After that, we're going to move right into pending and/or new legislation, and I'll be taking the notes, so it might be a little delay as I ask for firsts and seconds and let readings and so forth. So we're going to start with ordinance number 23-2014.
I'd like to offer ordinance 23, 2014, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
Tom, could you read that, please?
An ordinance ratifying repeal of ordinance number 5-2013 regarding the non-resident use of fee for the Macedonia Family Recreation Center.
I think we need to suspend the rules and vote.
Yeah, you did by making that motion. Okay. What's your pleasure, Nick?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance 23, 2014.
Jan, second. Really, I heard her, barely. What's your pleasure?
I already did. It's roll call.
Roll call.
I'm first, Tom. I'm first, so usually you.
Yeah, I'll call it, Tom. Rita Darrell.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
All right. Ordinance.
Could we ask Mr. Molnar to explain what we just did?
Mr. Molnar?
Sure. In the last meeting, we had discussed the $50 fee for non-residents for the recreation center. After a lot of talks, and I think there were some concrete numbers that showed, I think we gained $8,000 from doing that, but we lost $19,000 or 13, what was it?
We gained about $9,000 and lost about $26,000.
So we lost $26,000 by adding that fee, and it just didn't make sense to do it, and we have since repealed it. So I think there'll be more to come on how you're going to deal with getting some of that back to those folks. Is that correct?
Yes. Yep, we will get that information out to those who it affects. So, thank you very much.
Very good. Moving on to ordinance number 24, 2014.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 24, 2014, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance authorizing the reimbursement of building permit fees regarding 9805 Firestone Lane for a project undertaken by the Make-A-Wish Foundation.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance number 24, 2013.
Second.
Ms. Darrell.
Roll call.
Roll call. Ms. Darrell?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 24, 2014 passes. Who seconded the?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, ordinance number 25, 2014.
Please bear with me. I'd like to offer ordinance number 25, 2014, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to entry into a contract with Bowman Appraisal Services regarding the Phase 3 widening of State Route 82 Project, SUM SR 82 4.56, PID number 81656.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 25, 2014, please.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Darrell?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25, 2014 passes. Basically, what's going on here, I really should stop, I should have stopped after the last one to give you a little idea what that Make-A-Wish was about. It's really nifty. Make-A-Wish came to our town. We got TV coverage because they helped to install an elevator in a house for a crippled person. Really a nice story, and we're waiving fees and so forth for them. So it's a good publicity for our town, and we're only too happy to make that happen. Then the next one, as far as Bowman appraisal, they're the last appraiser we are going to be hiring. We had to hire four, two for the ramp and two for Phase 3 of Route 82. This is the second one for Phase 3 of Route 82. We must have two appraisals because when you live by ODOT's rules, they really, really are very, very rigid to make sure nobody's getting shortchanged. The people who are getting paid money for their property, the city. And in order to do that and make sure it happens that way, you've got to actually hire one appraiser to watch the other one. All right. Moving on to ordinance number 26, 2014.
Yes, I'd like to offer ordinance number 26, 2014, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance providing for the 2014 annual appropriations.
All right. We'll be moving on. So as you can see, we're starting to get to the last steps of passing our budget, which has to be passed bylaw by the end of March. All right. Are there?
End of March.
End of March, yes. Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider veto ordinance 2000, excuse me, 12, 2014.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dave and Rita. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
All right. Let me do a roll call. Ms. Darrell?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
No.
Ms. Tully?
No.
I believe it takes four votes to overturn a veto, so the veto stands.
Mr. Mayor, we're not, this is the, this is not actually to override the veto, and I thought three votes is two-thirds. Do we have any, why is it four?
It's four. Two is, you operate under Robert's Rules of Orders when there isn't a specific rule adopted by council that supersedes that. And in this instance, when you take a look at how to calculate the two-thirds, and the question is, the two-thirds of five is 3.3, so you round up, or does it stay at three? And the theory behind that ruling by Robert's Rules of Order is, is that if you have three individuals, it's less than two-thirds, and you're not making the mandated requirement that's set forth in the charter, so that it requires another person, that being rounded up to four. There was a case by the United States Supreme Court, as well as Ohio Supreme Court, that addressed that very same issue and ruled that way as well. So that again.
Do you have those cases, or would you get them to me?
Sure.
Thank you.
Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
Can I make a motion? There are minutes, I don't know if anybody else read them. There are minutes in our packet that were, so I'd make a motion to accept the minutes estimated by the clerk of council for the February 13 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are accepted. Jan made the motion. Nick second. All right. Now, is there any other motions or legislative actions?
Yes, I have a motion to, I make a motion to endorse the Ohio, excuse me, the Longwood Manor Historical Society's submission of a national register nomination form to the Ohio Historic Preservation Office. And this will assist us in fundraising and in configuring the home and so forth, and the council, it's part of the process is to have the owning entity to endorse the submission of the form. So I'd like to make that motion now.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Sylvia, if you could give me a copy of that?
Yeah, I will.
All right. Sylvia made the motion. Rita seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right. Motion passes. Any other motions or legislative actions? Since we don't have a clerk, we don't have correspondence, let me go right into the mayor's report. It's a little disappointing. You know, doggone it, we're doing so well, but then corporations pull out all their stores. So unfortunately, we no longer have a Dots or Hobby Lobby. They left.
Champ.
And Champ.
Champ.
Champ's gone. Thank you. Somebody told me it was Hobby Lobby. Mrs. Castle, you keep me straight. Thank you very much. I was told it was Hobby Lobby. Well, I kind of figured they were going to be going, but Dots, Dots is corporate, all right, so we don't have anything to say about it. We are not going to be surprised if Hobby Lobby goes because they've kind of had some problems going on with their executives as far as Obamacare. And Obamacare puts a lot of strain on some of the bigger businesses, and they're fighting back with the threat that they might close down. Just something that I have here, it's a sheet of paper that's worth $302,458. This, I'm sorry, $458,845, over $3 million. On this paper are all the road repairs we have done since 2008, starting with the state route upgrade, where we made state route in 271. It covers everything from all the full-depth repairs we do of our roads. Full-depth means you actually dig the road out. South Freeway Drive, 82 widening, Valley View, all the way down to the bottom. The last one is the ramp relocation that will happen starting in, hopefully, August. So if you add all that up, that's $302 million worth of roadwork, just to make Macedonia the true crossroads roads of northeast Ohio. I was in Medina this past Monday for Governor Kasich's State of the State. He's very excited about the great financial condition of the state. Ohio has $1.5 billion in its surplus fund. That's the good news. The tough part for us as a city is that a good portion of that excess may have come at the expense of towns like ours. We are facing reductions in municipal funding that we have always received. Municipal funding, in the Depression, the state came to the cities and said, "Let's make a deal." And they shook hands. "We're going to charge sales tax, but we're going to give you a portion of that sales tax back." And it was all done with a handshake. Don't ever do a deal with a handshake, because now the funding is gone. And that's a lot. They took away estate tax. Well, you know, morally, you think about, well, yeah, estate tax is when people die. That's not really a nice thing. But if you're going to take something away from us that we rely on so we can run our cities, replace it. Don't just get rid of it. Replace it. This is not just about taking the money away from us that was extra. It's about removing funding we have relied on for covering operation costs, thus creating a need to find a way for municipalities to replace that revenue. In most cases, cities have only two choices: win the lottery or taxes. Winning the lottery would be great, so will somebody buy us a lottery ticket? The burden of keeping sovereign is on us alone without the state as it was in the past. So am I saying right now we're going to raise taxes? We're trying our damnedest not to raise taxes. But when they keep taking away millions, we lost a million point three with our reduction of taxes, and the amount of money we're losing from the state this year, Scott, help me remember?
About $250,000. $250,000.
$250,000. You know, that $250,000 alone could buy us more equipment that we need, another dispatcher, all those things that this city needs are gone because they took that money away from it. As far as encouraging economic development and being innovative in the approach the past state governments had, we've improved by leaps and bounds in the past couple of years. We have more jobs, less unemployment than has been the norm preceding Governor Kasich. So there's good news and bad news. Basically, they're doing things the way government has to do to exist, and that's doing things out of the box. A lot of decisions that were made were not very popular, but they were made to try and get back in line as far as cost. Only problem is, I wish they'd have found another source other than us. Jim Digatano, our service director, and I were at the meeting of the Tinkers Creek Watershed Partners on Tuesday, and Jim is already using this information we used there, but we learned there towards getting grants. The Tinkers Creek Watershed Partnership started as an alliance between them and the Kaihoga Board of Health. Well, they did that for a while, and now they've spread out so that us and our surrounding communities contribute money to them so that they can exist and go after federal funding to fight stormwater. So Jim is already working on trying to get us some of that federal funding. Please remember, and I'm going to start to say this now, please, please remember to find alternate routes to reach your destinations. There will be a lot of orange barrels on Route 82 besides the new ramp that could start as early as July. The I-271 corridor will be widened to six lanes, so if you take that to go to work, I feel sorry for you right now because it's a parking lot in the mornings. The good news is they're going to widen the road. The bad news is they're going to widen the road, and the traffic's even going to be worse. So right now is the time to start, well, let me try going this way today, a little bit different. We have two new bridges coming. The bridge over Route 82 will not only be made six lanes wide, but it'll also be widen the span. By widening the span, that'll allow 82 to be six lanes wide. But again, this is going to create havoc. The good news is that they are going to have this done in two years. So hopefully, two years from now, we'll say, glad to have it done, and how wonderful this is, and why didn't we do this sooner? Your best friend during all of this is the Police Department's NICSIL program. This program will continue to warn you of potential delays by texting a message to your phone. It's so easy to get it on your phone. Just send our zip, 44056, to 888777. And don't forget, if you have a smartphone, you can get our Macedonia app. We have our map update ready that has the pictures of our new council people on it. We put some more staff on it so that we get a way for people to actually see who you're talking to. Hopefully, we can have a better relationship with our residents through this app. After I approve it, and I have approved it because everybody looked pretty good, except Dave used his high school picture, but that's all right. I'm just teasing.
All right, that's all right. You've worn me out over the years, made me look old. That's okay.
So look for that to be coming. We have to now wait because the app has to go through approval by AOL. That's how it's routed. So once that's done, you'll be able to go to our app and see everybody that's sitting up here now. Our total revenue from our court in January was $28,410. And that concludes my report. Moving on, are there any committee reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has met in, both on the, well, now I can't remember the first meeting in February, but the second meeting was held on Wednesday night, and we are going to be having a public meeting on March 6 at 6:30 PM for having the Macedonia residents come in, hear the explanation of where the budget is and what we're working on, and the, basically, what are we going to be funding this year as a recommendation, and other things that we're not going to be able to fund. We have another expandance committee meeting scheduled for the council on March 10 at 7 PM, and that will be, I think, our semifinal round at least of final adjustments to the budget. And we're anticipating, of course, passing the budget as is required by law by March 31st. So we're moving along. We've had a tough time, but we're keeping going on this, and I think we're going to end up with an excellent budget. So let's, just wanted to make those comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Are there any other committee reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, at this time, there are no committee reports, but our Planning Commission meeting will be March 17 at 5:30, and also our JED meeting will be Wednesday, March 19 at 6:30.
All right. Thank you very much. I think that 17th Planning Commission meeting would be very, very interesting. We actually have two hospices coming to that meeting. They will be located, if they come, because they haven't purchased the property yet. I think the reason some of these people do this, they come to the planning commission and see how tough it's going to be, how they're going to have to build their building, how they have to, what kind of comments we get from our professional planner, how things go there. And many times, when it's successful there, we end up having them come here. They make the deal, buy the property done, they're coming in. If two hospices would actually come here, that would be a godsend because there would be a total of 180 beds. They would be doing kidney dialysis. They would be doing a lot of those things for elderly people that need to be done. So you would have a staff that is not paid minimum wage. You would have excellent-trained people who make higher wages. And of course, what that does is it generates more city income tax force. Are there any other committee reports? Hearing none. Let's go to Jim, department report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As most of you might have known already, especially the seniors, I decided to change the service for the senior snowplow. I rehired Stewart Landscaping from the previous years to finish out our winter, and I'll most likely go back again with them next winter. Unfortunately, the contractor we had wasn't doing what he was supposed to do, so we had to make those changes. And I just want everybody to know that if you have any problems with your yard because of this other contractor, just let us know, and in the spring, we'll fix your yard up when we do our restorations. Everybody, you also know that our streets, because of the extreme weather, we're getting a lot of chuck holes. And it's not just Macedonia, it's all over. So I want you to know our coal patch crews are out, and they have been out. They're out all the time when we're able to. You know, if we're not plowing and the weather is decent, they are out. And we always follow the street list unless we are told of specific holes. And anybody that is called and said they had a deep hole anywhere or anywhere else, you call my office, we take care of it, probably within an hour or two hours of the phone call. We're pretty quick on that. So if you see any of these potholes or you're having problems, you know, contact my department. And the number is 330-468-8323. And the number is 330-468-8323, or else you can use the new Macedonia app, okay? And just for our seniors, just for a safety note from me, if there's a major storm coming, it might start Saturday night, but it'll go through Sunday into Monday. My advice is tomorrow's supposed to be decent, and maybe Saturday morning, go get what you need. If you have prescriptions, or you're Melt-Wire, whatever it is, try to do it then so you don't have to go out into the, that weather that's coming. And that'll help us too, because then our trucks can move around without having cars on the road, okay? That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. Good job. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. I want to thank Council for the Make-A-Wish and the Route 82 appraisal services. Both of them are important to us. Also, I gave Council and the Mayor capital improvement history from 2008, when I became Building Commissioner to the present. During that time, the roadway capital projects exceed 300 million. So we're gonna put this on the website as the mayor wanted and post that. Also, we're gonna break another line item down for what actually was expended by the city and what was brought to you by funding. And then, the mayor is correct, we do have the two nursing facilities on, as well as some others that are coming in daily for the next planning meeting. We're still busy with the assisted living center, working out the details of their drawings, as well as the 80-unit apartment complex. GFS just finished finishing up their foundations, and they're moving along good. That concludes my report.
Good job. Angela?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of program announcements that are coming up. We do have line dancing, a line dancing workshop scheduled on both Saturday, March 8th, and Saturday, bless you, Nick, April 5th, from 4:00 to 5:30. You can sign up with a partner, that's not a requirement, so you can sign up as an individual if you would like. And it's not just country music. So if you are not a country fan, it is Latin music, there are salsas, oldies, rock and roll, all kinds of stuff. So people, it's been really popular, and people are having a good time with this, so those are our next two dates. And then we are also hosting a boater safety course through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. That is gonna be held on Mondays beginning March 24th for four weeks. You must attend all four dates. This is from 6:00 to 8:30 PM, and this is a requirement for anyone in the state who operates a boat over 10 horsepower. So anyone born after January 1st, 1982, is required to complete this course in order to operate a boat in the state of Ohio. So we are a facility offering this course, so if you are getting a new boat or planning to drive a boat this upcoming season, this summer, then I would encourage you to come sign up at the Recreation Center and take the course with us. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. I think it's a law that you have to take that schooling if you drive a boat, or if you have a licensed boat, so. And there's not very many places that have it, so thank you. All right, Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Angela forgot about the March 8 fishing event that we'll have. We had one on February 15th at the Rec Center, and we're trying to gear it to 10 years and younger. They get a free fishing pole, and they learn how to cast into the pool. And the event, the mayor was there, and we had probably almost 25 kids attend, had a pretty good turnout. So there's a registration sheet at the Rec Center, and we're also gonna put some flyers out to Ledview Elementary School, probably, maybe tomorrow, in anticipation of trying to, we'd like to get between 25 and 30 kids there. One of the other things I want to talk about is the Water M&amp;E. Maintenance funds went out last week, where we're charged $20.80 for the maintenance of our fire hydrants. That was an ordinance passed in 1967, and the rate has not changed since then. The only things changed that, well, I understand, they used to bill them quarterly, and you'd spend $5.20 and get billed, and then somewhere along the line, someone decided to bill them yearly, 2080, so a lot of people don't realize, and we get them sent questions every year, what's the 2080? And I'm hoping to actually maybe have that put on the property taxes. I talked to a number of residents that come in and did pay, and I didn't hear anyone complain about, instead of getting it mailed to you, which is a lot of work for us, that maybe the county would take it over, just put it on your property tax, where then it would be billed the following year in half-year increments. So you'd see that on your tax bill as a 1040 special assessment if Council decides to run that way. But we had a little glitch. We print those up back in January, they're mailed out in February, and we had that recent legislation that seniors that were allowed to be in the senior programs that got free snowplowing was then also abated on the 2080. So when the bills came out, those people were already pre-printed, and they were mailed out. So we're returning those checks based on that list, and then also, we sent out another one, another bill, copy of your bill, said, please disregard if you were on that senior citizens list. So we're getting that problem fixed. Again, we're involved in the Finance Committee meetings, and I think it's been well broadcast that there's a huge hole in the general fund because of the loss of the $1.3 million, and also because of the state funding, reduction of local taxes, and also just from the phase out of the inheritance tax. So there's some challenges ahead, and it's really gonna affect capital, and, which brought down the list considerably, the amount of projects. One of the first, the Street Department list that was brought to the Council was looking at $1.4 million in capital, from trucks to manpower to getting fixed, streets fixed. That was then subsequently asked to be prioritized, and that list came to 700,000. And out of the 700,000, this Council's looking at probably not funding much more than 100,000 and that type of, so that shows you the shortfall that we anticipate. But we did have some issues with BORMA insurance covering our claims. At the runout, we switched over to the county, and we're hoping to get those resolved, and Legal Department's been working with our, Betsy, who's our HR person, getting that straightened out. So that's it.
All right. Good job. Don't forget, I don't think you mentioned that those kids that come to the fishing clinic get free rods and outfits, giveaway stuff, okay?
Right.
All right. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let everybody know that we do have a large mulch fire that's been burning now for three days up on South Freeway. It's a Green Line landscaping. There is no exposures to it. They did take one of their pieces of equipment out to dig the pile down. It's a natural occurrence from the composting. Unfortunately, their machine froze, and they had to rent a machine to bring out to dig the mulch down. We've been up, we've laid hose in twice, about 1,000-foot of hose back to it, and soaked it down, but obviously, over time, it stays heated. It's deep-seated inside of this pile, pretty natural process, so they are up digging it out. If you smell smoke, we're well aware of it. We're going up every two hours. They do have people there that are working on it, digging it out, and again, there is no exposure and no problems there. There's no, there's no buildings probably easily 300, 400, 500 feet from it. And it's surrounded by rock, and it's not going anywhere, so it's just gonna take a little while to dig down there and put it out.
Wow. Tim, do you think that the mulching around flowerbeds would burn? When I see mulch burning, I think, well, somebody threw a cigarette there, because the mulch isn't as thick as in that pile.
Yeah, this pile's probably a good 50, 60 feet high, and it's probably 400 foot by 400 foot. So they do a lot of composting up there. They take in branches, and then they grind them up, and they sell it as mulch. So that's their business there, and they've been doing it for a long time. They've actually gone out and rented a machine to come in and dig it out, and they've been working on it. It's just such a large pile, and it's gonna take time to dig down to the seat of the fire and get it put out.
Wow. Well, there have been reports of smoke, so now at least people know what it is.
Absolutely. It's not really much more than somebody burning wood in their fireplace, that's what it is. And if you smell me, you probably smell a bunch of the smoke, so, because I've been up there. We've been checking on them every couple hours to make sure. The guys that are working, they have a cellphone, they can call us if they run into problems, but really, just getting the big machine up there and digging down to the seat of the fire and exposing that. Right now, the mulch is keeping it warm, and it's keeping all the heat in there, it's a natural process, and that's it. But, you know, we do have mulch fires. If you stack mulch up around your house, a lot of times, it is starting, especially in our businesses that, down here, where people are walking into the store, and they throw a cigarette over in the mulch, and it touches off, and we get those a lot in the summer. Very rare to have a mulch fire in February, so it is extremely cold out, and it's tough on the guys to have them out. So when we were up there fighting it yesterday, we just rotated in and out, and we got them inside of a rescue squad. But any type of exposed skin, especially since you're up in the air on these mulch piles, it's rather tough, so we're limited about 10 minutes leaving the guys out.
So you had the aerial tower there?
No, the aerial tower is not gonna be good up there to try to throw water all the way back to it.
All right, you were up in the air just above it?
We're up on the mulch pile, yeah. We're on gravel piles, trying to throw water down onto it, yeah.
Wow.
So, but it is burning up there, it's not a hazard, and it's certainly not gonna get out of control. There's really nothing for it to burn, so, no exposures.
All right, Tim. Thank you. John?
Just, we've been experiencing a few more accidents than normal. Salt and short supply, as Jim has said before, so drive slower, give yourself a little more time, so you don't have to rush. With the storm coming, as Jim indicated, if you can avoid parking on the street to help us clear the streets, so the trucks don't have to go around parked cars, and then you have a space where there's snow in the street, so let them have a chance to do their work. We'll see if we need to send out a NICSIL alert for snow parking ban, but if you can, just don't park on the street. It helps everybody. And, you know, there's been a couple accidents up north of us on 271. I know we got a phone call and an email from a resident who was a little upset about that, that we didn't notify Macedonia residents getting on the ramp to not go up there. The freeway was not closed, it was very slow, but everybody's doing the best they can, so.
Well, thank you for sending out that NICSIL alert. The NICSIL alert actually went out at 1:26, and the lady wrote her email at about 1:40 or so, and there's another case, if she would've had NICSIL, she would've known and avoided it. Also, I'd like to compliment you on the dispatcher and working with, there was a woman that broke down next to the road, sub-zero weather, I think she was in Boston Heights.
Peninsula, I believe.
Peninsula, so even further south. And she couldn't get anybody to help her, she called AAA, the car battery went dead, she was sitting there trying to keep warm, it kept getting worse and worse and worse. And then finally, they started calling for help, they got ahold of our dispatch, and one of our policemen went and got her, brought her back.
Karen did a fantastic job with that.
Yes. Congratulations. Good job. Nick?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would just like to expand briefly on the projects that you mentioned in your report, Mayor. First of which is the 82 repair and resurfacing, which is the west end from the city's West Corp line all the way about up to the 271 bridges. That project is being designed by ODOT in-house, it's currently on schedule, and they anticipate selling that next year for construction to be performed during 2015. It's a one-year job, and it's a grind and pave with some repairs to the base pavement and the curbs and whatnot. The 271 widening is a two-year project, it's a design build, and that's also on schedule to be sold this spring in 2014, with construction to start this year, and it's going to last two years. One of the first items is the 271 North Ramp relocation, which is on a very aggressive schedule for right-of-way acquisition. That project, as you mentioned, Mayor, may start as early as July of this year. The drop-dead date for ODOT is August 1st. If that construction doesn't start by August 1st, it may get bumped to 2015. And the third project is the 82 Phase 3. That is on schedule for a detailed engineering submittal, a stage 3 submittal, as we would call it, and mid-March, that goes to ODOT. Right-of-way acquisition process is already underway with DLZ. Thank you for passing legislation tonight to bring Bowman on board. He's gonna come on board and review the work that DLZ is doing. That project is also on schedule. It's scheduled to be sold this December, December 2014 through January 2015, with a contract to be awarded to the successful bidder early in 2015. It's a one-year construction project. It's gonna add three lanes from roughly Alexandria all the way through Shepherd Road. From Shepherd all the way to the East Corp is gonna be repaired and resurfaced, and again, that's a one-year project. Thank you.
All right. Are they putting storm sewers all the way to Twinsburg, or just around Shepherd?
The storm sewer improvements are primarily from the Alexandria intersection, where the two-way left turn lane's going, all the way through the Shepherd Road intersection. So you'll have a curb pavement all the way through there, so you'll have catch basins, storm sewers, culverts.
And those people have suffered there for years, because that's like a big bowl.
Yes, I believe Jim's provided them some very necessary relief, you know? So I believe they're happy right now. They should be happier once, you know, 2015's over and that improvement's installed.
Yes, I have spoken to the folks who live on the corner and neighbor, and they are very happy with what Jim did to help the situation right there.
And thank you, Jim, and thank you, Nick, for keeping us updated. All right, Tom, what you got?
No report, thank you.
No report, okay. Well, that means we have to go into new business? Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay. Adjourn was read. I'm sorry, so.
Do you ever get sick by seafood?
Did I get sick by seafood?
Do you buy seafood? Do I get sick by seafood?
You gonna be out tomorrow morning?
I'm just gonna check on that.
You think so?
I just wondered, I'm gonna be down there tomorrow. I'm down there tomorrow, and I just wondered if it was, that's good.
That's good. Hi! Hi, nice to meet you.
I am the business manager for the Nordon Hills Community Corps.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I was wondering, I have a couple of houses that are much larger than this, but this is what they look like?
Yep, I saw that.
Okay. I'd like to bring one up to the Rec Center, actually, I'll be up there this Sunday as well.
Absolutely.
Can we put one up at the Rec Center?
Yeah, give it to the front desk. I'll have them hang it up. I will be in tomorrow. I'm off tomorrow, I've scheduled it out, but.
I'll tell them I spoke to you.
Yep. Yep, just give it to them, and then they'll take care of it. Okay, no problem. Yeah, I just wondered, because I've been going out to Carolina, but I'm gonna be down there tomorrow. Probably pretty good. Hi, how are you? I'm not in tomorrow, so you can bug away.
I wanted to get an email from NICSIL. I don't have, I signed up for the texting, and I was getting charged all these texts.
Because it varies, because it's all different kinds, yeah. Because it goes from kids to individuals to families.
I was just saying, we wanted to get.
It was an annual $50 maintenance fee assessed.
When I signed up, I was paying all this money.
It was passed last year by, and it went to affect the NICSIL.
Yeah, it had to come.
We went through that whole process, and ended that, and I had to put that whole thing together, so I just assumed, you know, I knew this was kinda taking its rough track. I didn't intend that. I moved the 75,000 from the Capitol into the Fire Department's line item budget.
Same time period, just the timing board, same time.
Forty to sixty on what? No, well, that was the savings that would be if you, because originally, we just looked at the retainer, reduced the retainer. But since they already have three months of the retainer already spent, technically, you know, when you look at the whole $74,000 in dollars on the retainer, well, three months is already spent, which is like 22,000.
Yes, we're going to run promotions and.
It's more because of the difference in.
Pension. I didn't take the pension. We get our members back, we have to go elsewhere at this point.
So that was 40 of them.
Maybe the process, just because.
Correct, the difference is adding a pension on it. That's how much it saves.
But they may not be, so we're gonna try and do what we can.
And then realizing also that, you know.
So you understand why I'm screaming about this?
Oh, I know. But again, it's like, what do you want to say? That's the problem, everyone's saying, well, you gotta know first, you do have one first, it's the chair of finance, so if you put it in the office, it does.
The thing was the paper, we should train something for Council before we.
I know, but today, you.
I'm not blaming you.
I know, but you need to have it on first reading, so it's, what, you're gonna put nothing down there?
I believe it was, both of those.
That's the thing.
Neither of those passed.
So this is the only thing that passed? People could just. So, this is the only thing that passed, people could just say, shade.
It's not.
It's, it's how many versions, you know what I mean? It's how many versions you want, until somebody just says, you know, what they should have been doing in this thing is saying yes and no on this in that meeting, and then, and then I would have been able, okay, did you want the dispatcher in there, you know, vote right now, we don't, we don't try to go to the stands on the dispatcher, why do you want to pull in there and do a song and dance? It's three people, he's out. Sorry, Harry. I mean, the same thing, you know, I want to talk about it, people wouldn't get it. And then, no, you don't say, I know it's a long, important, it's a version is... Okay, thank you.
We have to, we have to stay with that, 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 because many changes are made to that document, which we can't, that, 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 that , the initial, yes, I guess, nothing changed, so, you know, that, 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 you know, I mean, because this, this is the only thing that, you know, we worked on, we had
a revision of the neighborhood thing, I had, I had, that, the difference that he made, this one, I went back, there was a difference here, six dollars, and what happened was, first, he looked at the log sheet, and there was a six thousand and seventy dollars, whatever that difference was, well, he had that twice, and then he took ninety-two thousand, so when I went back in there, and I, I think that's, I made sure all these corrections, right, and made it easier for him, because it was kind of like jumping back, the idea is, how many hours was this, making this, 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 making that, when you take these four dollars, four thousand, four hundred, five hundred, right, that's how much work you get per year, it's not built, and that's how much work you get per year, and you call it, you know, it's real, you know what I mean? He goes and track, and he gets his operating paycheck, that's like sixty thousand, every week, he's like, you know, that's a year, he's breaking down nine, ten, three, six, forty-five a month, but the question is, why do we get our money squared for as much hours? Because anything besides beyond that, you consider some, and he builds it, and he builds it at that rate, no, but it doesn't matter, you know, it's, 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 it's expensive, it's like health, it's like your next step, you want to take, you want to buy the, you want to buy the, you want to buy the, it's a question, you got to see, that's what bothers me, it's just...